Welcome everyone to our county commission meeting in Weaver County. This is Tuesday, June 17th. I'm Commissioner
Recording in progress.
I'm joined by Commissioner Jim Harvey and Commissioner Gage Ferrer's excuse, he's at a conference this week. I'll have the audience stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance after which our invocation or moment of silence will be given by Sean Wilkinson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father in Heaven, we thank Thee for the many blessings that we enjoy living here in Weaver County, for the beautiful surroundings that we have and for the quality of life that we enjoy. We recognize that over this weekend locally and nationally and around the world, there have been some tragic events and we pray for the families of those who have been affected and we pray that we may have more compassion and patience and understanding, that each of us could do our part to make things better. And we pray for this in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Wilkinson. Item D, Commissioner comments. None?
None. Well, I do want to just walk quick. You know, I'm remembering, not finally, but remembering the day at one of the great mines that have ever worked in the, in the, in civil law for not just Weaver County, state of Utah, was a guy by the name of Dave Wilson. He had a phenomenal impact in my life when I first started here and back in 30-plus years ago. He was always steady and consistent and, and smart and he was exact. I mean, he was just, he was just a smart, caring, wise individual. He's bettered the lives of nearly every person that I can think that he came in contact with and just was incredible father man and I'm just thinking of him today. He's, he retired quite a number of years ago and this other great man, Chris Crockett's the one who took his place. But Dave's sick and his passing is likely imminent, but I just wanted to thank him for, publicly, for his, his sharing to me, caring to me and that's all I wanted to say, just mention, bring him up.
Thank you, appreciate that. I do want to mention one thing as well, I mentioned this in a meeting earlier with our directors and elected officials and that is, we made an announcement a couple of weeks ago about our new animal shelter director and that's been kind of on the forefront of, of the minds of the county as we've tried to fill that position and we have a new director named Siri Main, but what I really wanted to mention publicly is the staff out there who have been phenomenal. They were without a director for probably four months, maybe four and a half and, and just carried the weight of everything that happens at the animal shelter. There were a couple of tough things that happened now at the animal shelter during that time and they just have, have helped us make this transition to a new director seamless and they, they've done a lot of hard work. So with that, we'll move on to item E, agenda-related public comments. If there's anyone in the public who'd like to speak to any item that's on the agenda, you're welcome to do so. We ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone who'd like to come forward? Anyone online? Okay, we'll move to item F, consent items. Number one, request for approval of purchase orders in the amount of $119,009.25. Number two, requests for approval of warrants numbers 105288 through 105327 and 491379 through 491501 and 450 and 451 in the amount of $638,895.33. For a summary of warrants and purchase orders, Mr. Jason Horn.
Thank you. Looks like for purchase order summary, we've got total purchase orders of 11. That amount equals 119,000. 29% or 35,000 of that is for paramedic. That's ventilator and extrication equipment. 26% or 31,000 is for the IT department for data protection software. 21% or 24,000 is for the roads department and that's repaving trails in the upper valley. 11% or 13,000 is for the library and that's for camera and AED replacement equipment. For the warrant summary, total warrants were 165 and that amount was 639,000. 16% or 102,000 of that is for the Golden Spike Event Center for security cameras and land maintenance. 15% or 94,000 is contribution to Trails Foundation of Northern Utah and that's from transportation tax dollars. 13% or 84,000 is Golden Spike Event Center. 13% or 86,000 is road and highways and that's road supplies including asphalt. 12% or 76,000 is for the jail. That's medical health expansion design and roof repairs. And 6% or 36,000 is for the library and that's building maintenance utilities, books and materials. The top five vendors, we've got number one Trails Foundation of Northern Utah, 94,000. Digital Systems Installation at 84,000. Staker and Parson Companies at 75,000. GSBS PC at 67,000. And for number five Rocky Mountain Power at 36,000.
Any questions?
No questions, Madam Chair.
Okay, and we'll move on to number four, request for approval of minutes for the meeting held on June 10th, 2025. Number five, request for approval of new business licenses. Number six, request for approval of new beer licenses.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion. We approve items F1 through and including six as presented on the consent items today.
I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
My motion carries. Item G, action items. Number one, request for approval of the final reading of ordinance 2025-13 for fee amendments relating to the Weaver County Transfer Station. Mr. Sean Wilkinson.
Thank you, Commissioners. As noted last week, the transfer station is increasing a few of our fees. So the first one is the main tipping fee for general waste and for construction and demolition waste. That will go from $50 to $52.24. A dollar fifty-seven of that increase is from Republic Services for transportation and disposal costs and the additional 67 cents is a county increase for personnel and operations increases. Then we are increasing the fees for our mattresses. Any mattress in excess of the first two will go from $5 to $15 per mattress. And we are also increasing the fee for delivery of compost and wood products, both within Weaver County and outside of the county. So those are the changes that we are making to the fee ordinance and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
No questions, Madam Chair.
Okay. Seeing no questions or look for a motion to approve this?
Great, I'll make a motion, Madam Chair, that we approve ordinance 2025-13 as presented by Mr. Wilkinson today regarding transfer fee fees.
I'll second that.
Roll call vote for ordinance 2025-13. Commissioner Harvey?
Aye.
Chair Bolus?
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, item two, request for approval of the first reading of fee ordinance amending sewer service fees.
Thank you.
Welcome back.
I'll stay right here. Commissioners, every year we do look at our sewer fees and this year we are increasing our sewer fees to pass along the cost increases that we receive from the central Weaver sewer district. So in addition to those fees, the county is also increasing its fee by a dollar fifty. So we will go from 1295 to 1445 and that is for unincorporated areas of the county within the central Weaver sewer improvement district service area. Now, the fee for those who are not within the central Weaver district is a little bit more, but that's just because they pay an out-of-district fee. So just for clarity there. But those are the changes and this is the first reading of that ordinance. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I didn't realize that we serve, that central Weaver serviced anyone outside of their district.
Yeah, there are certain parts of the unincorporated area in western Weaver County that are not yet annexed into that central Weaver district.
Interesting, I didn't know that. Any questions?
No questions.
Okay, I'm ready for a motion then.
I'll take a motion. We approve those fee ordinances for sewer fees as presented by Mr. Wilkinson, item number G2 today.
I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item three, request for approval of a first reading of an ordinance of Weaver County, Utah imposing a transient room tax not to exceed 4.5% on short-term rentals in, of accommodations and services as authorized by Utah Code 59-12-3011A2. Welcome, Cortland.
I know. Took on a little different appearance. Shorter, not quite as thin, but Cortland couldn't be here today, so I offered to present on this. So as mentioned, the legislature in this last session passed HB 456, transient room tax amendments, which made a whole slew of changes to the transient room tax code, but the one that we're here to talk about today and the ordinance that we would like to have passed is the ability for the counties to increase their transient room tax collections from 4.25% to 4.5%, so a quarter of a percent increase. The state will also be increasing their transient room tax portion by 0.75% or 0.32 to 1.07%. So this is, they were looking to do the whole 1% increase themselves, but realized the counties needed to implement their own. So the state portions increase will go into effect July 1st, but because of some delays in getting the right language and the ordinance details to the counties, what we're hoping is that we can get our ordinance passed by July 1st so that the tax can be implemented on October 1st.
Any questions? Ms. Tolliver?
No, I said, I'm glad, I appreciate, I know that you've been representing not just our area, but had a strong voice of the state. This comes after a lot of back and forth and we've settled there. I think it's really good and I think it's good for our county to do this. So Madam Chair, if you're ready?
I'm ready.
I'll make a motion that we approve this first reading as presented by Ms. Tolliver this morning regarding the TRT tax.
I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item four, request for approval of the first reading of fee ordinance amending certain fees of the clerk auditor's office. Ms. Stephanie Ebert, looks like you are doing the presenting.
I'm here to talk about fees also.
Okay.
I'm here for the first reading for a change in the ordinance for the fees collected by the Weaver County Clerk Auditor's Office. The management team met and reevaluated some of the fees. Few increases, just a dollar for some certified copies of marriage licenses and also taking away some fees for voter certificate, voter certificates and so forth. So not really too many substantive, substantive changes, but I am just here for the first reading.
What is a voter's certificate?
Um, couldn't tell you. I don't know.
Curious. We eliminated the fee, so I just was curious about that. Any questions?
No questions.
Okay, ready for a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve that first reading ordinance regarding the, the change in fees or elimination or updating of the fees as presented by Ms. Ebert this morning.
I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, item H, public hearing. Number one, request for a motion to adjourn a public meeting and convene a public hearing.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Number two, public hearing and decision regarding an ordinance and development agreement to rezone Lowman View Development, formerly Terraki the River, approximately 134 acres of land located at approximately 500 North, 3600 West, from the A2 zone to the R115 zone. Mr. Charlie Urt, welcome.
Thank you. Excuse me, let me get the presentation pulled up for you. Looks like some technical difficulties. I'll run you through some of the details of this while we get that going. So this is a request for a rezon of about 150 acres, 147 or so acres. And one thing to note is that about 38 of those acres is actually being rezoned to the O1 zone where the rest of the property is being rezoned, requested to be rezoned to the R115 zone. In exchange for the 38 acres being rezoned to the O1 zone, which that, those 38 acres is right along the river corridor. So they'd still get some of the credit from the O1 zone being placed. Most of my presentation was visual. So the Lowman View Development, that used to be called the Terraki the River Development, so it's at the very end of 39, or excuse me, 3600 West. There were a lot of different infrastructure challenges in developing this property. It's, it's quite a ways away from a lot of infrastructure. So just to kind of recap on some of those things that we've already talked about, they're going to need to rebuild 3600 West to a full county standard from, excuse me, from 400 North all the way to their development. They're going to need to provide a secondary egress and in your staff report, they show where that secondary egress is currently being proposed. They would really like to secure the 700 North corridor from their project all the way to 4300 West. That would be the most ideal circumstance, but in, in the absence of doing that, because they don't have all landowners on board yet, they do have what they believe is a legal access to another property where they can put a secondary egress back to 400 North that doesn't otherwise use 3600 West.
Can I interrupt you really quickly?
Yeah, please.
They believe they have?
They have shown, they've shown us documentation and they say that their attorney says that they think they've got enough standing to enforce it. We have a caveat in the development agreement that says if they can't, they don't get what they're asking for.
All right.
So I say it that way just because I've got some concerns, but we, we wrote the development agreement with that trigger in place specifically.
Thank you.
The long-term goal obviously would be to get 700 North. That's what our, excuse me, that's what our general plan shows for the area, but we don't have all landowners west of this project on board just yet. When I say we, I mean the developer. We're not actively, the county's not actively pursuing that at this time. The other two challenges that they have is access to sewer and access to water. They are going to be served by the county's collection system, which will go to central Weaver for sewer and they're going to be served by Taylor West Weaver Water. They're going to need to provide improvements, significant improvements to get both of those services extended to their property. Upgrade, upgrading Taylor West Weaver, possibly even looping their system back in and then installing at least one pump station for the, the county's collection system for waste transfer. With those things in mind, the development agreement is written with triggers, like we've mentioned with the secondary egress, that no more than a certain amount of homes can be built if, if certain actions aren't taken. And over a certain amount of homes, they are required to build a full county standard secondary egress, so full, full street would be required. They are in anticipation of 700 North going through, they are willing to cash escrow the full cost, including the land cost, the land acquisition cost to purchase all of 700. They just don't have the right to cross yet. So they want us to know that they're, they're willing to put skin in the game, money in the game, they just haven't quite got all signatures ready. Oh, good, we got it. Okay. This is what the rezon would look like if approved, so you've got a lot of A2 zone out there. They're asking for the R115 as well as the O1. In order to be able to get the same amount of density that they would have gotten if the O1 zone was R115, sorry, some of the lots in the actual R115 zone will need to be a little smaller. They proposed along 3600 West, which is this road here, they proposed along that some, what they're calling it, six, six-packs. I think we've seen six-packs in the JDC Ranch project, we've seen them in a few other projects where they're single-family homes that gain access from a shared private driveway, but the shared private driveway then connects to the county's public street system. So, and then from there, let's see, this is kind of what their concept plan looks like. North is to the left. You can see that 3600 West will be extended at least to here. They don't own this parcel here. We're trying to get the two owners together to work on that. So the 3600 would be extended at least to here at full standard and then picking up from the other side of the property and going to right about, actually it'll be right about here. We're asking them to stub the right-of-way to the river, even though we're not asking them to build the whole thing because we just don't know yet if that right-of-way is going to go over the river. We don't know if Marriott Sladeville's going to want 3600 West to extend it through, but at least build that road going to what is going to be a park trailhead or a trailhead for that park. They've got two trailheads being proposed, one down here, one down here. They're both about a mile apart if you use the Weaver
Sorry, show me that first one again.
Yes, sorry.
Oh, okay.
So kind of anchoring both sides of the development and then they're, they are going to be building the Weaver River Parkway in this area. They're proposing a little bit of a different standard on the Parkway. They're proposing eight feet of asphalt. We usually ask for 10, but in exchange for the difference, they're proposing four feet of packed soft trail immediately adjacent, which could be used for equestrians or for joggers. Sometimes joggers don't like to run on the pavement as much.
Charlie, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Because I have not had boots on the ground, as you would say, Commissioner Harvey. What is that? It looks like, what is that white? It looks like an island almost.
Right here?
It's flood zone.
Uh huh.
That's actually, so it is an island kind of, so you've got an oxbow, old river channel. Excuse me, frog in my throat. It, it's wet a lot of the time, but the river actually throws, flows through here. They don't own that piece. It is in the unincorporated area, but they don't own that piece.
Oh, okay.
I believe that
But it's not buildable, I'm assuming?
Yet to be seen. I think most of it is in the flood plain. We do allow some development in the flood plain, they just have to meet certain standards. Yeah, I think it'd be challenging to build, but if they needed to, the road is right adjacent to it if they ever do propose something there. Previous owner of this property, I believe, is the owner of that property there. With that in mind, I mean, you can see because they don't own this property here, you'll have roads coming in, going up, this is 700 North here, going up, coming around and serving the rest of the project here and their egress is down here, that's their emergency egress, which will need to be asphalted, built to the fire chief's full standard, so we've, and open for public use routinely.
Also, if you follow Street D toward the river, is that planned to be a, a river crossing with a road or what kind of bridge is anticipated to be there in the future if that develops on the other side?
So the county is planning on 3600 West going all the way to the north through Marriott Sladeville and into Plain City. Don't, don't reboot. I've had that happen before. Into Plain City, which would then connect this area to essentially where the market is up in Plain City. Marriott Sladeville has other ideas though and we want to be sensitive to their ideas and so we just want to carve out the opportunity in case, in case Marriott Sladeville changes their mind or has different shifts in politics or development desires. Same thing with Road C, Street C, which
Oh yeah, sure.
Actually it changes to Street A and then it connects into the river here. The intention being, excuse me, eventually that one will connect over to Pioneer Road, which goes to the freeway. So be quick and easy access to this development, long-term if Marriott Sladeville wants to do so in the future. So yes, there need to be a full standard street bridge that goes over both of those. We just don't have the ability to get it today.
Thank you.
Let's see. As far as the general plan goes, they are in direct compliance with the general plan. They're showing the R115 or excuse me, the medium to large lot sizes in the yellow and the green is the open space 300-foot buffer from the river. They are going to give the full 300. We've talked a little bit about whether 300 is needed on other projects. I did let them know that other projects, we've kind of yielded a little bit in exchange for other benefits. They said, no, we're just going to stick with the 300. We're, we're so far down here and they think it's going to create a really cool project in here. The park area has been tentatively accepted by the Park District, so as soon as the development comes in and they start plating, those will be platted in favor of the Park District. As far as streets go, I mean, you can see we've got 700 crossing from about 36 back to 47, long-term, short-term, going to 43. And then as far as the other road to go, 3600 West being a major collector at some point in the future. So they'll be building the 3600 West to 100-foot wide right-of-way, 700 to an 80-foot wide right-of-way. Lots of opportunities for expansion in the future if needed. That's just another view of, of street connectivity. As far as sewer, we mentioned that they are within station lift area four. We had originally thought a lift station would be better kind of on the corner of 700 North and 4300 West, but where these guys are coming in eating sewer now, we're, we're trying to make it work best, having it be on their property somewhere. So it may be possible that we need to have a lift station here and then one over here in the future, just to try and expand that gravity service.
So if they do have that lift station, you anticipate they would need a second one in this whole area?
Possibly. It just depends on how deep they go with this lift, lift station here and we can, we can require them to go as deep as, as we need them to, you know, barring site constraints, but I do believe our engineering division will try and hard, we want to try hard to consolidate as many lift stations into, into one as possible. As far as the development agreement goes, it, it captures all this. When you guys talked about this in work session, there were some minor tweaks to the concept plan. You wanted to make sure the planning commission was comfortable with those tweaks. We took it back to the planning commission in a work session. They said they liked what they were seeing, they were comfortable moving it forward without having to do a full reconsideration of it. And there's one last question that I want to make sure that I address with you guys policy-wise. The development agreement, we had negotiated months ago about water-wise policies for this project. At that time, we were looking at maybe using some smart devices for sprinklers or some specialized irrigation mechanisms or, or planting mechanisms. One thing that the developer and I have been discussing in the past, over the past month or two, is the possibility of not being so specific on smart watering devices or anything like that, but rather putting a mechanism or putting a standard in the development agreement that says they're going to save or conserve X amount of water above and beyond the, the typical. And the proposal on how they would do that is with a building permit. Each building permit would come in with a landscape plan that has been stamped, certified by a landscape architect that has provided the calculations based on what the landscape plan is and what the irrigation configuration is, to certify essentially that that irrigation system with that planting configuration conserves water. They're, they're proposing 50% conservation over what Weaver Basin is currently considering right now. So it's quite a bit, I believe Weaver Basin, if I remember right, anticipates about 120,000 gallons a year for a quarter acre lot, so these guys are targeting 60,000 gallons a year. We haven't done this yet on other projects. The question when it comes to irrigation is how do we make sure we, we're doing water conservation and meeting some of our water conservation goals, both from a state level as well, as from a local level, without being overly burdensome and overly regulatory. On the one side, there's a perspective that if we require certain kinds of like smart watering devices or something like that, that might be a little bit too much and a little too intrusive. On the other side, it's are we going to be able to actually enforce the architect's recommendations? It's a little bit of a balancing act. I think with the way the applicant wants to go with just the architect recommendations or relying on private market to certify that the project or that each site, excuse me, is designed correctly and that puts a little bit more, it's then a little bit more innovation on the landowner, whoever that landowner ends up being, to try and be in compliance so that an architect, a third-party architect will in compliance so that an architect, a third-party architect, will sign off on it. And then from a county perspective, it's just a checkbox for us. Hopefully, it stays that way without significant changes in the future. So, if you guys are comfortable with that, the development agreement doesn't have that paragraph in it, but we do have it in another development agreement that I can just copy and paste in if you're comfortable making that change. The paragraph that's in the development agreement in front of you would require smart watering devices and similar types of mechanisms that we've discussed in the past on other projects. Any questions for me on this?
No questions right now.
Not now, but I will after the public hearing.
Okay. All right, we will move to number three then, public comments. Anyone wishing to speak to this is welcome to come forward at this time. New one online? Okay, then I will look for a motion to adjourn the public hearing and reconvene our public meetings.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Number five, action on public hearing H2, request for approval of ordinance 2025-14 and development agreement to rezone Lowman View Development, formerly Terraki the River, approximately 134 acres of land located at approximately 500 North, 3600 West, from the A2 Zone to the R115 Zone. Questions?
I do. Can you pull up your maps again, please, Charlie?
Yes, sir. Which map you thinking of?
The one that's the overall map, that not the, no, keep going. Shows that that'll work.
Go back.
Think, well, not that far back, Charlie. Okay. Couple of questions. During your presentation, Charlie, two things that, I'm gonna just throw out my concerns. Along Street, what's, Street D or 3600 West, there's that parcel of land that does show, of course, you have alternate connectivity, but that other road going through, it's a concern, but not a deal breaker. What is called Street C, going top to bottom? Yep, that one, and then along the same aforementioned 3600 West. If and when a bridge is required, if or when a bridge is required, who would pay for that bridge? I realize that this is a connector-type road. These guys would be helping facilitate that large buffer between the existing road that's there. And I'm only mentioning this because we've worked eight, nine years of history on this baby right here.
Yep.
And so, I know the road from, that's entering into the project, or their south border, all the way over to, literally, 12th Street. So, talk to me about that really quick.
As far as-
I just wanted to know about bridges.
Yeah, yeah, good question. As far as the bridges go, we would probably target these bridges at the point we know that they're needed. We'll probably target them with impact fee facilities planning, as well as approaching WACOG. As regionally significant connections over the river, we would be looking at a broader funding source, I think, for those.
Impact fee facility, impact fee, would that be just on the subdivision, or on the whole area to come?
It'd probably be the whole area. Yep.
But if, by approving this concept now, does that preclude them from those fees?
No, no. They'll be paying all the impact fees, both parks, wrecked trails, streets, sewer, they'll be paying for all of those because there are system improvements that are going to be made as a result of this traffic that are well beyond this project.
So, we're talking about, so you just said impact fees, but that basically means that we, as unincorporated Weber County, or municipal services fund, would end up having to pay for that?
Potentially, potentially, if it's deemed to be needed. And that'll be-
Well, it's the full build-out, obviously, right, Charlie?
Yep, yep.
Right? So, or a percentage of completion or portion thereof.
Yep.
So, that's a concern. The other one, the other concern I have is that, the Oxbow. You said that property is still being held by the same person who owned the previous piece of property? That's a concern for me.
Okay.
I won't expound on that, but that's a significant concern for me.
Couple of things that we could do to address possibly that concern, something that I thought about as well. If you'd be interested, this map shows the 300-foot buffer along the river in O1 Zone. They have up to the Oxbow, where that common property line is-
I see that.
They have said that along that Oxbow, they'll do 100-foot wide buffer. If you'd like to extend that grain all the way up and through, you can do that. We could adjust the legal description for the O1 Zone to take that parcel into consideration, if that's something you'd like to look at.
I don't want to do it. In my mind, that would be a taking from the current applicant. I need more information. I'm not prepared to make a decision on this today because that is another piece that's a big concern for me. The other things, I have, there's been some concession made by the current developer that I think I can live with. I think that they're men of integrity, and I don't have any hesitation with their desire, but there are a couple of those big concerns. So, just to be clear, the piece of property that 3600 West goes through, not that big a deal. That's not a game, that's not a deal breaker for me. But that other piece is, I need some, I'm gonna need some, away from this meeting, legal counsel with regards to this, before I can feel good about approving it at this time.
Fair enough.
Anything else?
I, an inhaler, but no.
Okay, no other questions, then I would entertain a motion on this ordinance.
I moved to table until I can get that information.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item I.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
We are adjourned.
Recording stopped.